It's six o'clock. We'll call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. No pastor Steve. Craig, would you like to lead us in brief prayer?
Father, just want to thank you tonight for having us and allowing us to be, to meet and make decisions that would honor you and this city and in the best decisions for the city. Just guide us and give us wisdom and be with us when we try to make the best decisions possible. We pray in Jesus's name.
Amen.
If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Page roll call.
Rothschild.
Here.
Kennett.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Barnhart. Rudehouse.
Here.
James.
Here.
Samowski.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next on the agenda would be public comments related to agenda items. City ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give input up to three minutes. During public comment, there can be no debate or action by the city council at this time. Anne, anything?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Great.
The Waterworth presentation, when was that ever brought up to the council? That we were going to be going for this kind of thing? Can I ask?
Tonight. This is a committee of the whole meeting, so this is the discussion meeting. This is the first time the council is introduced to the Waterworth product. This is, it's in regards to the utility rate study that was in the 2024 budget though.
Thank you.
Anything else, Anne?
Not going to know about him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, on the agenda would be mayor's comments, and I have none at this time. City council comments. Any members of the council? Okay, city administrator comments. Brandon?
Just a reminder to the public and the council that the packets for elections are out and circulation is active. The due dates for turning in your information here at City Hall is, the last day you can submit a petition packet is November 18th. So just keep that in mind as we quickly approach the fall.
Anything else? Okay, moving right along. Item number eight, under administration, eight point one would be the approval of the 2024 street milling bid.
Okay, so the last meeting, council took action on the IGA with Henry County for the HMA overlay. This is the process we go through every year to bet out the actual millings of the streets that are going to be overlaid. The bid opening took place and Valley Construction was the lowest qualified bidder at $45,228.75 for the proposed streets that will be overlaid, which will start to take place here later in September, I believe, if it's approved.
What did we, what was the budget amount? You said there's a budgeted amount. What was it? Motion to recommend this to the special city council meeting awarding the contract for 2024 street milling project to Valley Construction in the amount of $45,228.75.
Second. Motion by Arnold, second by James. Roll call.
Rothschild.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Rudehouse. James.
Yes.
Samowski.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point two on the agenda would be R-24-09, the support of the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant for the pedestrian bridge at the Oakwood Landing.
You know, Alderman Swanson asked about the bridge at the last meeting. This is a resolution in support of the project. This is something that we have to do for our grant submission process through the state of Illinois ITUP grant. This is essentially a resolution stating that the council supports the project if we were to receive a grant. The ITUP grants, as we've discussed before, they're, this is due at the end of September. We won't know if we're awarded funding until the spring of 2025. What else can I tell you on it? So this is, the other note that I put in here is we had a meeting with the Geneseo Foundation, or they had a meeting of their board, and they're going to honor the $125,000 grant that they awarded us two years ago when we were going through this process, when we didn't get the ITUP grant. So essentially with the, with the engineering cost estimates, if we get approval, even if it's 50% approval through the state grant, we have the Geneseo Foundation for the secondary 125, the bridge project is essentially funded at that point if we were to be awarded the grant.
So for award of the grant, is the cost of Geneseo City, we know?
Yeah, we're gonna have to budget for it for year 2025. We're gonna have to put it in our budget, the $250,000, but because the grants are reimbursement grants, once we, once we pay the amount.
Do we know what this thing's gonna look like?
Yeah, the, I mean, to envision it, you know, we have a... Yeah. Yeah, really, the, some of the best renderings we have are from Deputy Chief Gene Carson, probably on just an idea of a photo overlay of what the area will look like. We're working on an updated one right now that also has the new sign, the landing area in there, so it looks pretty when we submit it for the grant proposal, but... Most likely a very similar look. Six foot wide, about 70 feet in length, crossing the creek.
A motion recommended City, R-2419 to the city council meeting to place on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Arnold, second by Kennett. Roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Samowski.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Rudehouse.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Rothschild.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point three would be O-24-05, the electric power cost adjustment.
Well, Mr. Rawl, come up for this one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of difficult to understand what the power cost adjustment is. So I'm gonna probably lose you pretty quick. So in 2022, we implemented the power cost adjustment because we started seeing the price of power skyrocket. So at that time, we implemented this instead of a base price for this PCA. And we've been using that number since we implemented it in '22, but the markets changed. So what we're trying to do is make that base number reflect what current situation is in the market. So we are adjusting that down, but it does not raise a rate because our rate is already there. This is, just determines on whether or not how much credit you get if the price of power remains cheap, or how much you would pay extra if it would jump up. So I get my attachment here. Some slides in here, real quick, just kind of remind everyone what the power cost adjustment is. It's just a mechanism to ensure power costs recovered from the customers, but if that power becomes lower, the customer benefits from it also.
Is power ever low?
Yes, it is.
But I'm reading this right?
Yeah, so it's low right now. So, no, well, not right now, now. Actually, it's really high right now, but just because it's 98 degrees outside, but overall, on average, it's pretty low. So when we did the cost, the PCA, we calculated it off of 2021's numbers, and this is where we came up with the base. And then we froze that in time. So we, every time we look at rates and our rolling average, we're looking at this base number that has not changed.
Since '21.
Since we implemented it in '22, but yes. So it hasn't changed, and we've been following this. And towards the end of the slides here, I'll show you, the customer is paying a little bit extra because the cost was higher. But in early 2023, we saw where we were giving credits back to the customer. Those credits, since the price of power has gone lower and lower for the last couple of years, are getting bigger and bit bigger right now. We are currently a credit of about one cent for every kilowatt that we're actually selling. So that means that our base isn't realistically where it needs to be. So this is for us to adjust it. So this is a calculation we use for '21. Annual power supply divided by the annual power supply kilowatt hours, and you get roughly five cents a kilowatt. This is what we're proposing now, is the same thing, and it becomes 4.1 cents a kilowatt.
So what happens with the credit? I'm on you until you talk about the credit.
Okay.
And so if it goes back up, you do the same, you use annually?
So this gets updated, the PCA gets updated monthly.
Okay.
The, what we're asking for is to update this annually. So for next year, we would look at this year's cost to be able to set that base.
So if it goes up next year, what happens with those credits?
So you get a credit during the month, but it's a rolling six-month average. So if you had one high month of power supply bills, like whether it's from MISO, whether it's because we ran the power plant, whether it was Loisa having maintenance done, since it's a rolling six-month average, it wouldn't hit the customer because you have low months in there. And that's why it's always a rolling six months.
So it sounds a follow-up smooth.
Yeah, it smoothens it completely out.
I'm just trying to figure out, when does it, when does that number hit the point where it affects the customer?
Okay, so we will go to, so this is what it currently does. This is a residential bill right now. If we kept it currently the way it is, for every 900 kilowatts that you use, we're basically giving you a discount of $10.14.
They physically see that?
Oh yeah, they physically see it on their bill.
Because you can't keep it?
Uh, no, because the way the PCA is set up is that they get that credit. And we were seeing, and then like I said, we're seeing month after month that the PCA is staying right around one cent, and it's been that way for a while.
And what are we looking at, long, forward, not back?
Forward, so even with, I did estimates on the end of the year, and it stays right in that range for the rest of the year, meaning that realistically, that base price is not accurate.
And you're not seeing a spike on the horizon anymore soon?
No, I mean, we have two days that we've seen minor spikes, but nothing. So this is what, if we were to implement the new base price, what we would see for that same 900 kilowatts, the customer would still get a credit of $2.95.
Were they, we're getting a credit of what, $10 bucks?
$9, yeah. $10, yeah.
But I thought you presented this every year, like in the fall.
No, we do not present the PCA every year. We do avoided cost of credit for net metering customers that have solar. That's every spring.
Right. Okay, so I have a question. Like if you go back up.
Yep.
Keep going. I just am curious. Keep going. Okay. What, what all goes into annual power supply dollars?
So for both of those, so any power that we buy off the market in MISO.
Okay.
Any, the cost of diesel fuel, natural gas for the power plant.
Okay.
Our bonds for the wind turbine and solar array go into that also. And so those all go into that, and so do the kilowatt hours. Is that is actual kilowatts produced or purchased? So all those costs go into it monthly. So our bond payment, I spread out through the 12 months for every kilowatt that is produced, we get a rate for that.
So the rate of electricity is going down, the customer is getting less of the credit?
So we're seeing it on our side too. So the same as the customer getting the credit, the utility is seeing a hit on it because that gap is so big. So any benefit that the utility may see, we're directly giving that to the customer because we set that base price high, $50 a megawatt. And I'll show you where we're not coming anywhere close to that $50 a megawatt or five cents a kilowatt.
You're losing me when it's five cents a kilowatt before, and they're getting a $10 credit. Now it's four cents a kilowatt, and I only get $2.50.
$2.95.
Yeah. All right, so this is a daily, average daily price for electricity going. So in '21, you could see we had a spike because it was a winter storm during, in February, prices spiked. And then you can see where '21, that's a pretty average year. And then in '22, it's the green where it spiked. This is where we took the PCA and we implemented it because we were seeing 6.8 cents a kilowatt on our cost, when it should have been a lot closer to 3.8 cents a kilowatt. Now what we're seeing in the blue is last year's prices. Everything stayed pretty steady until the end of the year, where it really started dropping off. And then this year, in January, we see that prices were a little high, and then it just bottomed out. So now that we're looking at those prices that are really low, and our base price being high, that difference is actually coming from the utility instead of actually being closer to zero. Where, and that's where you want that PCA is as close to zero as you possibly can.
So that's the reason they're not getting as much because of the gap?
Yep.
So next year, if it follows the blue or close to the blue, it would stay?
It would stay consistent. You would be really close to that zero mark.
But this kind of will stay the same, or just they get less of it?
It all depends on how high that would go. So that if it went really high, then you would see an extra charge on your bill. So if natural gas went up, the market went up, diesel fuel went up, just like we saw in '22, that PCA would go the other way, and it'd be an increase. But I don't see that happening. I see the prices staying relatively average where they have been historically. Because we're not changing it from a drastic amount from where the base is currently to what we're proposing right now. We're just trying to narrow that up enough to where it's realistically what our cost is, and basically it becomes zero.
Let me try to explain, let me try to explain how it makes sense in my head, because I have a hard time nailing this down too. The formula, there's a six-month rolling average that adjusts monthly, minus the base equals the PCA credit. So if what we're proposing is to adjust that base annually and keep it up to date with real-time conditions, if you don't do that, you think about, so you have the six-month rolling of what's going on currently, minus this base, which right now is set at 2021 conditions, the utility is not picking up the proper amount there because it's set at '21. So you have to have that base factor in there, subtract it off the six-month, at least that's how I like to think of it. Does that make?
Yeah, that's accurate. I mean, you got to make sure that that base is what we're actually seeing and not just...
So I'm gonna ask the embarrassing question.
Zero for the lack of...
Right, yeah. I mean, our rates are set.
Right.
You know, this is beyond our actual rates right now. This is us just basically giving a credit back currently to our customers because we're seeing prices being lower also. But our problem is that base is gotten, is not accurate to what the current conditions are.
So why are we basing on 2021? Why don't we do this 2022 or 2023?
So, and that's what we were looking at.
The trend and the gap, the consistency had not established to the point where it was time to come forward and be like, okay.
Yeah.
It seemed to have a trend and a pattern here. I mean, and you wouldn't want to do this every month.
No.
And with the six-month rolling, the way it's set up, I mean, it does require a certain amount of time to be established, establish a trend. They said you want to do it every year, right?
We will start doing it every year, so that we can actually see it.
The point is, he's bringing it to attention now because if, I don't want to say it's significant, and you have something wrong, but it's to the point the trend is established, it's time to bring it forward to look at it versus a year ago, is this a blip versus a long-term trend? Now this seems to be a time.
But in '22, we did the same thing. We did not implement a PCA until we started seeing higher prices. We waited to see whether or not they'd happen. We, I wanted to see what the summer months were gonna look like, to see whether or not that PCA would start correcting itself a little bit more because normally in the summer, we see higher prices. We have not seen that.
The other thing, we don't live, I mean, so much of our pricing to it is dependent on things such as, you know, the environment and conditions and things like that. We don't necessarily live in Arizona where it's 90 degrees every day and everything sounds cool consistently.
Right. So, and this is what, since we implemented this power cost, the orange there is where the customer was paying more. And that was most of, excuse me, 2022. And then what we saw in '23 is that the customer was, they started getting the credits. And then this year, you could see that that credit continued to grow and grow and grow. And this is what we were seeing, where normally we should see that really like closer to even if we can. Any questions? I know it's, it's a lot.
Too far ahead for you?
No.
Oh.
I'm saying that the customer's done all right.
Yeah, yes, I would say so.
And by, and by bringing this more in check with where we are now, though, people did do all right too.
Yeah, and it, for the end of the year, it does look like if we continue on the trend that we're on, we will still be getting credits.
Right.
Instead of, you know, basically getting a 9% credit on your bill, it's, it comes a 2% or 3% credit.
And really, that was the intent all along, was to have that flexibility to go slightly long when you need to, or take it to the high side when it was costing us more, but then it also needs to be adjusted as we see fit, or as we're thinking of it forward, that there seems to be a trend in place, and this is the proper time to do so. Motion to recommend O-24-05 to the council, city council meeting, and to place on the consent to check.
Second. Motion by Arnold, second by James. Roll call.
Rothschild.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Rudehouse. James.
Yes.
Samowski.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point four would be the Waterworth presentation.
Okay, so in this year's budget, we talked about when establishing the budget with the council last year, doing a utility rate study. We budgeted $60,000 for a utility rate study at that time for year 2024. We put out an RFP. We didn't get much of a response. The response we did get back was over the anticipated budget dollars that we budgeted, over $60,000. So the past few months, we've been talking about, do we go back to the drawing board on RFP? What do we, what do we do? So we learned about this company called Waterworth, who, you see these gentlemen here on the Zoom presentation that Garrett has set up for us. They're gonna talk about a product that they have that we think Chad, Eric, Jamie, myself, having meetings with them is a better spend of these dollars, and it would be a five-year subscription with them. They provide tools and assistance over a five-year period to keep our rate analysis up to date, help with rate recommendations every year, and can provide real, live feedback of conditions and help us plan for the future, consider our infrastructure, consider our bonds, consider everything that goes into the things we should consider, so we don't see dramatic rate fluctuations as the goal, where we're just trying to keep the funds healthy, but we consider all budgetary factors and infrastructure. So I'll let them, hopefully they can hear me. They should nod if they can. There we go. We'll let Matt take over from here, and we just asked them to give a very high-level overview of what Waterworth is and why staff is interested in this proposal.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for the introduction there. Good evening, everyone. Just to do a quick introduction, my name is Matthew Katsamata. I'm an account executive here at Waterworth. Today, I'm also joined by my colleague, Grange Gordon. I want to thank city council for having us today, as well as making time in your agenda. I'll make sure to keep it pretty tight and efficient, no more than probably about 10, 15 minutes, as I'm sure there's a full plate. And just for a bit of context, as, you know, we've already been provided there, myself, as well as city staff, Brandon, Chad, Eric, and Jamie have had a few conversations over the last month or so, again, discussing the goals, priorities, and in many cases, challenges for the city and how they may align with Waterworth, and specifically as it pertains to financial forecasting, long-range planning, utility rate analysis. So my goal here today is to give you all a quick overview of our solution and our business model. For the sake of time, I won't go in too deep, but I want to, again, explain how we compare and also differentiate from, you know, traditional solutions, specifically that traditional rate study. Essentially, we will be focusing on, again, making sure we are able to successfully fund capital projects going into the future. You know, again, accounting for and protecting customer affordability, ensuring full cost recovery, and really trying to enhance that financial transparency for you all as decision-makers moving forward. So I'll make sure to also save some time to answer all questions as we go through here today, but I definitely want to make sure we are able to demonstrate some of the aspects of Waterworth. So just in terms of, again, a little bit more context, your staff has done an excellent job giving me great information on the city itself. I know through our conversations, just like anywhere else in the state, as well as country, there's aged infrastructure to address. So with that comes the tough balance of revenues versus customer affordability between capital planning, you know, rate setting, financially forecasting, our needs into the future. That can be often a lot to manage internally. Historically as well, I know it has been harder in the past to maybe, in some cases, meet the budget. In some cases, we had to look at cutting projects, you know, forced to raise rates. And as, you know, we've seen and experienced, if we set rates at the beginning of the year, by the end of the year, we could be off, or maybe perhaps charging rates in residence a little bit more inequitably. So as mentioned earlier, I know that we also currently have an RFP out for rate study. So far, it sounds like there not has, there hasn't not been quite the right fit yet. And then again, based on my conversations and the proactive mindset shared by staff, goals moving forward are really gonna be much like the following. So I know it's gonna be dynamically accounting for projects to ensure there is, again, that capital financial forecasting, and then also being able to understand how our customers are using utilities from there, again, promoting that affordability between those customer classes. In doing so, sufficiently allocating revenues to our reserves, rebuilding those capital reserves, and in general, just having more financial control. So for example, you know, accurate rates which reflect the dynamic market, and for electric side, you know, fluctuating energy costs, for water sewer, again, differentiating, you know, between those different capital needs. So with that, some background on us as well, we actually, again, what we used to be in our background is in rate consultancy. So again, we used to be much like those firms who would respond to your RFP, come in, perform that rate study over X amount of years. I think that, you know, this is one of the... I think that, you know, this is one of the reasons we pivoted our business model from offering traditionally consultant-led rate studies is that, you know, when you all would go get to, you know, receive this rate study, um, it's often that snapshot in time. So they would ask for your upcoming capital plans, the timing of these projects, the cost of these projects. And I think as we've seen over the last couple of years, uh, everything is moving and shifting, whether that's project costs, you know, wholesale rates, interest, timings of projects being reshuffled. And I know as Eric alluded to me in a previous call as well, an example of this being the last true rate study, um, I believe on the electric side was around 2006. Despite some adopted rates within this time, there were still unexpected capital projects and hurdles that, um, did arise that weren't necessarily accounted for within that original study. Uh, I think that was like the two wind turbines as well as a solar array. And again, this wasn't reflected in the rates and those bond payments again weren't reflected, rendering that study less effective as it was that snapshot in time. So the other piece there being often these studies advocate for increases which don't realistically account for, you know, residents and affordability over the short or long term. In many cases, it could just be, um, you know, this is what the math is saying, not necessarily what we can all think is not only viable for residents, but also viable for you all as decision makers. So again, with Waterworth, how we fit in, we can update this model live in real time as we're seeing these changes come in and see how this is going to impact our utility funds going into the future as well as what that burden's going to look like for our ratepayers. This is going to make it a lot easier for you all as decision makers to have all this information accessible in a very visual and transparent fashion. Um, and as I said, again, our background, the 15 years of an experience before pivoting our business model to offering now, which is a cloud-based solution, which is really going to be half software, which allows for, you know, individuals like Chad, Eric, uh, and your team to have those really strong data-driven recommendations right at their fingertips and then have professional support and advising with our background, being able to back them up and support you all as we go through these different pieces. So we also work with, you know, hundreds of communities across North America, specifically in, um, Illinois, for example, we're working with Moline on Kelowna close to you all. I know that's actually where we originally first heard of Waterworth as well. And just before kind of transitioning, going into a little bit more context into a tool, a brief overview of itself, are there any questions on what I've said here so far or basically anything I've covered? No? Okay. What I, what I'd like to be able to do is also open up the opportunity to maybe, um, Chad, Eric, I know we've had extensive conversations. If either of you wouldn't mind maybe speaking to, um, why you've been considering Waterworth a little bit more than, um, what we were looking at when just following through with that RFP? If that's not something right now, I always can just jump into our demonstration as well.
Like to say anything at this time as to why it seems more attractive than the traditional rate study?
Yeah, that's correct.
So when Matt presented this to me, uh, I've, I met with him three times, uh, asking a lot of questions on it. And what he'll show you is that the software allows us not only to do our capital planning years and years in advance, as right now we keep updating our five-year capital planning, but it also helps us do operating budgets and, um, stuff like that to where we can put, um, increases in those line items and forecast that out five, 10 years so that we can kind of see what that trend is. While we're doing that, it also shows us, and he'll show you what our cash flow is at that time. And we can see it in real time on what year we would actually fall below that cash threshold that we needed. And then we can start playing with, well, if this is the case, do we need to put an increase in year one, two or three? And then you can kind of play with those numbers in real time. Um, and I'm sure Matt will show you to where we could potentially show council while we're negotiating what kind of rate increase that we're looking at as far as a percentage. We can compare them in real time on how that affects the customer. And meet like live here at the committee, the whole meeting versus Jamie going back, bringing back numbers and doing that kind of stuff. So Matt will show you, it, it's a very cool platform that he's got, very helpful for us, you know, as far as budget and planning.
Thank you, sir. Um, and again, you know, I, I'll do my best to speak to it here as well. I do have a tendency to just talk pretty fast as we're going through these things, but, um, you know, maybe a mile a minute. But again, um, because it's shorter timeframe here today, I'm going to do a little bit more of a high-level overview, as opposed to taking that deep dive, just to make sure we are able to save some time for questions at the end there. So with that, I'm just going to quickly start sharing my screen here. Are we able to see this? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So again, with that goal here is really to take you through some of the aspects of our cloud-based solution. A couple of things to note for any of our big users, key stakeholders, there wouldn't be anything to install, no extensive onboarding or downloads on there. And everything we're going to be seeing here today is just going to be accessed via browser. In this case, I'm using Google Chrome. We also would offer again, as I said, unlimited, unlimited users, unlimited key stakeholders, anyone who want to get involved. So same time, it's not just going to be software. As I mentioned to earlier, again, it is going to be fully backed and supported by our team. Really, you know, it's not going to be something we're just solely, solely throwing at you. For today's purposes, what I'm going to be looking at here is going to be a water enterprise fund. So this is essentially going to be the long-term financial model, the bread and butter of Waterworth, if you will. And again, when we're looking at this piece, typically what you would be seeing, um, you know, this would be what you would be seeing in maybe a 60-page PDF from a rate consultant. Except what we're going to be going through here today is going to be in live in real time. And as Eric alluded to earlier, being able to make those adjustments on the fly. So a couple of pieces here, this is going to be a fictitious data set, so not your own data. This is going to be in the great town of Matville here. And again, working with hundreds of different communities all across the country on these similar fronts. So in order to get everything we're seeing here so far, all we're going to be able to do is just take a couple of years of historical actuals, maybe our 24 budget and then being able to forecast out from there. In this case, we're only projecting about 10 years. But we do have the capabilities to project up to 80 or whatever we'd see fit for maybe some of those long-term capital plans we currently have. So what I'm going to do now is just break down this model and then build it back up. Again, it's very visual and it's focused on being transparent with you all as decision makers as well as the public. So you can see here, I can isolate different variables, whether that's operating expenses, current debt service, um, any proposed debt service. And also making sure we're able to account for any capital improvements. So this is where we take some end-of-year totals, what's been spent on capital. And I think, you know, one of the reasons, again, as I mentioned earlier, we pivoted from offering traditional consultant-led, consultant-led rate studies is that if you were all to get that rate study performed, you know, they would ask you all for your capital plans, the timing, the cost of these projects, as I said. However, everything's moving and shifting while costs and inflation are rising. So again, with Waterworth, we can update this model live in real time as we're seeing these changes and still understand again, not only how is it going to impact our utility funds in the future, but also again, how is it going to have that long-term impact on our ratepayers? So again, as I've just identified, our revenue requirements up until 2034 here, you can see, I've actually just done the most basic form of that rate study. However, again, instead of a snapshot in time, this is going to be a living, breathing study. So what I'm going to do now is just tie in some of our revenues. These gold bars can be adjusted based on different assumptions. These are going to be indicating our sale of water service, for example. So these can be adjusted based on population growth, decline in usage, um, forecasted adjustments. We also want to be able to count for any other operating revenue, um, you know, non-operating revenue, developer contributions, whether that's impact fees, system development charges, um, grants and borrowed funds. So again, Waterworth actually supports that grant application process just by giving a very clear illustration of where that money's going to be going in that long-term plan. But now that we have our revenues highlighted here, you can see when I start building back up our background being our revenue requirements, you're really able to see how we're stacking up in the long run. So in years 2019 to about 24 here, you can see our revenue bars are matching up quite nicely with our background being our revenue requirements. Um, and because of this, we'd probably anticipate cash to be quite balanced and healthy in these years. And it isn't till about 25 here, you can see we're experiencing just a little bit of a funding gap. And as this does continue on over time, we probably anticipate cash to be negatively impacted, which is ultimately going to be confirmed when I turn on this cash position punchline here, which tells that similar story. So what I'm going to do about, go about now is actually, uh, how we illustrate actually fixing this cash position. And now I'd say there's basically two ways we can go about doing so. One is probably the more historical way that most communities across the country fix this. And this is where we don't really want to talk about utility rates. Maybe we can defer our capital projects, perhaps kick the can down the road, right? And I think for, you know, most American utilities, um, this has been the story, you know, these assets are out of sight, out of mind. It's never really fun to talk about raising utility rates. However, as we've seen, you know, the longer we defer a capital project, the more expensive they're going to be, especially considering with inflation, they're still going to be required to be completed. So just for the sake of time here today, I won't show you the impacts within our model of deferring those capital projects. But I will show you again, the more proactive approach being adjusting rates. So coming to our step seven here, we can actually look at the sale of service forecasting. And again, these gold bars are going to be indicating our revenues, um, you know, taking into account population growth, decline in usage. Maybe we've changed our rate structure, um, and then also those across the board, uh, rate adjustments. So in this case, let's just say maybe, you know, Chad, Eric have come to you all as decision makers and say, um, I think we need to look at increasing our revenues. You know, we have some upcoming capital needs, costs are increasing. Off to the question that we hear is again, why do we need to be increasing rates with this currently, you know, healthy fund balance? And again, you know, why can't we just wait till maybe 2026 when perhaps we start crossing our cash reserve policy? And in this case, we could really illustrate and show when it comes to, you know, maybe if we wait till 2026 and it takes something maybe like a 10% increase. 10% isn't going to quite do it. Maybe it's to take something a little bit more staggering, like a 22% increase to be able to offset that position. And again, we all know that these are the type of decision, decisions that are not politically palatable. Um, that's rate shock on our residents. Nobody wants these increases, right? This really illustrates the decision that we make today are going to have an impact on tomorrow. So perhaps we'll want to be a little bit more proactive in that front, maybe a couple of sevens here, maybe a five, and then maybe some threes cascading on into the future. And again, we've been able to balance out our model. However, at the same time, we also understand that there are other realities, you know, perhaps, uh, the taxes on the general fund just went up this year. And you all come and say, well, we want to be mindful of our cost burden. And again, this is really where we're differentiating ourselves from that static study. You know, how can we work with 4%? Can we work around this? And this is where you all, again, as staff can say, a hundred percent, we can work with you. Maybe that means in 2024, we look at something like a 4%. And maybe that means when we come back in 2026, we can be a little bit more dynamic there and look at that 8%. And again, we've been able to balance out our model. So the big thing here is it is very dynamic and we're able to really ensure everyone gets on the right side of the table while still understanding what those long-term impacts are going to be when it comes to our ratepayers. And just to touch on it as well briefly, we also have the capabilities to get much more granular in actually how we're designing the rates, the math behind the scenes, so to speak. Again, just like any other consulting firm, for the sake of time today, I won't go be, I won't be going through it. I have taken staff through all these components such as conducting a cost of service analysis, um, and a rate design piece. But again, just for the sake of time here today, I wanted to keep it relatively concise. So just on that note there, I'd love to open up, you know, the floor to any questions or really, um, any comments so far as I've gone through this.
I'm sorry, you're saying this is a five-year commitment to start with?
The, the option that we have been, um, discussing thus far has been that five-year commitment. That's correct.
Yeah. That's, if you look at the, the proposal, that's obviously the higher commitment term is going to be the best, uh, financial option pricing structure that they're going to offer. That would still be under, right under what we budgeted, um, for the year.
For sure. And again, just to speak to that, um, this is something we know that's going to be not something we're doing overnight, right? This is a long-term plan that we're trying to set into stone. Um, and again, even institutionalizing it. So when it comes to, you know, not just looking at across-the-board rate adjustments based on percentages, but actually getting much more granular, running scenarios, looking at, you know, how we're actually designing these rates, what are they based on? That's going to be really pieces that we're continuing into the following years and staying on top of. So it's not just going to be, um, again, that once in, you know, one-time study, so to speak.
If I could just jump in there as well, we obviously do offer shorter-term contracts, like, uh, I think a staff member alluded to there. We do offer breaks, um, for multi-year commitments where it's going to have the least amount of impact on a rate pair. I think the, the biggest thing that we stress here at Waterworth is that we're trying to change the way these conversations take place. I think American utilities as a whole, it's, it's a very difficult industry. Without a side out of mine assets, I, I've been impressed by the, the notes that Matt passed along from his conversations with your staff. And we're trying to make this really transparent between staff, you all as city council members, as well as the public. We know that balancing customer affordability is a very delicate thing. And we don't think it should be looked at once every five years. We're trying to make this transparent, stay on top of this and find something that works for all parties. So our approach is, and then one of our clients in, in Moline, Moline, Illinois, uh, Tony Lode, it was a long-term relationship. Him and his council did a lot of hard work. Um, and again, uh, we want this to be something that's pulled up, you know, frequently and informing you all as city council members on a very frequent basis.
I think the important part for me was the fact that, you know, every, every budget year, we try to have, you know, that tangible conversation about what projects we're looking ahead and we try to prioritize with Chad and Eric and everybody else. And we do the best we can to, to, you know, look at that five-year window that we like to try to talk about, you know, what, what we're going to commit to doing next year, what's that, how's that affect down the road? But that's a conversation, you know, and this would give us the ability to have like more real-time impact visually in front of us all to see how it affects, well, you know, what we, what we have down the road, things that we're going to have to commit to because unfortunately, like they mentioned, we're, we're a community that has kind of put stuff off at times. And, uh, we know we, you know, we've made a commitment to that and we've done a lot of things and, and I thank the council and the staff and everything that we've done. And I know we're committed to keeping that ball moving forward. But, uh, you know, if you think about the, the water treatment plant, the wells, the, the electric, the infrastructure work that's going on and some of the projects we're doing right now and other projects that we're staring at, you know, we, we made the best decisions we can at the time. And I think we did a good job of that, but I would have loved to seen a graphic like this and play with numbers to see how that affects the following years, you know? And I think that's really valuable information as we make those rate decisions, to have that type of futuristic look, uh, for the taxpayer as we pass these things on to them. So that and I think of the fact that it's well, well-received by surrounding communities that have been using it. You know, it's always good when you have positive feedback from people that are using something saying, yeah, this, this works, this, this fits our needs. So.
For sure. No, I appreciate that feedback. If I could just jump in with, with one other piece, we know that there's a lot of different data points when it comes to rate setting and our model wants to take everything into account. You know, we don't want to have this information in three different Excel spreadsheets. And again, I think your staff know the numbers you live and breathe it, but we really created Waterworth for city council members because all your city staff can do is present this information the best fashion possible. From there, it's up to you all to make the decisions. We just want to get everyone aligned. Um, and also not only providing a model where your staff have those recommendations right at their fingertips, but also having our team there to support you. We have a lot of experience with presenting to city councils, running workshops, scenario exploration, a lot of different aspects where it's not just a solution or saying, hey, good luck, you're on your own. We're there with you with unlimited support and advising hours. So you can really lean on us for sure.
So how is this different than what we're doing now? I mean, obviously it's not live, but if we look back at, let's say, the past five years, how off have we been with what you've done, Eric?
So the way that we budget is we basically have a set revenue that comes in. If we don't raise rates or do anything, that's our revenue. So we might have a five-year capital plan and we're trying to put as much stuff in there as we possibly can, but over time with the, you know, interest costs and stuff going up. Sometimes we're, sorry. Sometimes we cut projects just so that we can make budget.
Ed's done it also in his department and we've done it for years and years to where, you know, instead of coming to council and asking for increase in rates, maybe we just push this project off another year. The problem is that project we push off is going to cost us more down the road. And what we see here and what I like is that you can see that five-year, 10-year where you can see how that revenue is coming in if you make no changes or if you make some changes. You can see some of those big capital projects that we're actually looking down the road for, you can kind of see it right there. That's, that's what's nice, I think, on my side that we can do.
And here's one way, it's, it's really different, Craig, is because so far our experience since we've been on councils, we direct staff to go back and they go out and they try to get comparables, communities of like size and everything like that, which is great. That's an important part. You want to be, you want to be mindful of what your neighbors are, but just because their rate is X doesn't mean that they have the same type of futurist, you know, either immediate needs infrastructure-wise or long-term needs infrastructure-wise. So you want to be mindful of what your neighbor is, but that is, that data is only valuable to you if it works to get to where you need to be with the projects you need to do. And you don't know what that looks like until you can plug in and, in, in real time, play with those numbers to see, you know? Just because we might adjust our rate a little bit because Spring Valley is, we think of a like mine. But is that rate going to get the projects done that we need to get done in, in the next year, three years, five years, 10 years? And because if you don't make those adjustments in year one and two and three along the way, then when you get to year 10, all of a sudden, then you're faced with what we've had before where you have a major rate increase of some sort. But this helps.
If I may, if I may be able to actually illustrate that within the platform as well. I know we're talking about actually deferring capital projects. I skipped over it earlier just for the sake of, um, saving us a little bit of time, but I actually can come to our capital expenses here, turn on a cash position and really show how we go about, um, really showing that long-term consequence of having deferred capital projects. So I can come back here toward capital expenses. And again, this is really going to be the case where you can see in about years 25 here, we can see our cash position starts declining. Um, and again, maybe this is where we don't necessarily think we want to be, you know, implementing a larger rate increase. Perhaps we can just potentially move one of these projects off. And again, if we look at deferring a capital project in 25, maybe in this case, we can say it's going to be a And again, if we look at deferring a capital project in 25, maybe in this case, we can say it's going to be a waterline replacement estimated around $3 million in 2025. However, the issue here being this 15% inflation. If we move this project just out three years, taking into account this 15% inflation, maybe to about something like 2028. This project cost has now gone up to 4.5 million. It's increased by 50%. And again, while it's remedying our cash position in the short term, we've now increased the burden for residents again in the long term as we're going to have to still be able to fund this project. So I just wanted to be able to show that we are able to, again, collaborate together, workshop, show the what-ifs, run those situations and scenarios to really find what would be the most equitable way to, again, not only adjust rates, but also fund these projects without deferring them.
Yeah, thanks then, Matt. If you don't mind, I'd love to just speak on the conversation around, you know, neighboring comparisons and how we look at rates. I think this is a very common practice, right? It's what's this utility down the road charging? And this is something that's usually really important to the public is what's that neighboring community charging? And the big thing we try and stress and we, we've done community cost comparisons because we know it's important. Of course, we don't want to be on other end of the spectrum either too high or right at the bottom. But it really doesn't matter what, like I heard a staff member, or maybe that was a council member speaking on, apologies, I can't, I can't really see. But, you know, it doesn't matter what X community is charging because they have a different system that is in different condition and they have different needs. So what we really try and drive is your costs should really drive your revenues. And I think to speak on how this differs from how most communities have managed this, usually it's what capital project can we fit into our revenues? Rather than what revenues do we need to match our costs? And again, with most American utilities, it's tough. It's really tough. And we're not saying this is going to change overnight, but we do try and strive with our clients using Waterworth and their councils to move that needle in the right direction to a more proactive approach and, and ensure that we have the sufficient revenues to support providing sustainable services to our constituents, right?
Okay, I agree with that, but why are we pushing projects off just to make budget? My question would be, why wouldn't you bring that to council and say?
I, I think I can speak for everybody here. We're no longer doing that, but I think that was more of a, what's that?
I don't think we are because I think we understand that if the more we put things off, the more expensive it's going to be.
But I understand that, Paul. And I, when I made that comment earlier, I was definitely not taking a swipe at anybody from, from previous administration. But yeah, we had to at times and I, and I, but that's important. If you get into a situation where you have to, again, which could happen to us or any other community, when you, you can do some, some simple sliding of the graph here and see what that impact is later. And that may be a decision you still make at the time. But, you know, I'm a big fan of when I get approached on the street, like to have as much data as I can to converse with the public. And things like that, when you can, you know, fire back with what the impact of that's going to be, whether you do or whether you don't do and what it's going to look like when you don't do. You can be mindful and be like, you know, we did the best bridge the gap now because of the economy, inflation, everything that everybody's going under, what have you. But it's not going away and it's going to be more expensive in the future. But, you know, I, to me, it's fantastic.
Okay, but aren't we doing it on an annual basis now? Okay.
The part that we are doing annually is the cost of service and we study that they're providing with this, which we budgeted for. All the budgeting tools that have come with that platform are kind of extra. What we were looking for is a cost of service study and a rate study so that we can go out there and say, hey, we went out there independently, found someone, said, look at our rates and determine whether or not, you know, our rates are fair or they need to go up based on our projects that we have.
And, and that's dealing with the rate side based on what you, what we want to do the next year. But I think, I think the significant factor that can be added here is, is being able to play around with this. This takes like the capital plan we're trying to do now and gives it the ability to be on steroids. With what you can do with, and I know Chad's not, Chad's not in there, with what you can do with data. I mean, as these guys, these guys might say, Chad might say, I want to put a saltwater treatment plan up in five years and that's in my five-year capital plan. And the, the legwork to longhand work that out and do math and figure out what those numbers look like compared to playing around with a project of that, you know, estimated cost in this format. I mean, you want to talk about utilizing staff man-hours to the best degree possible. Do you want them sitting there with a calculator and, and sourcing people and everything else? Or do you want to play with real data, real numbers in real time?
I don't know. What's the difference in cost?
So we were going to do a one-time rate study and we budgeted roughly $70,000 to do the one-time my capture. That was a great study. So if our capital improvement changes, then we would have to actually physically come back and possibly change the rate study. You know, we, this tool has it all integrated with the capital plan. So you can change it yearly or every six months, an emergency comes up, you can put those numbers in there. And then it tells you where exactly you'd be. But like for us, at the waste water treatment plant, when we did the rate study for the safety volume loan fund, we got approved for 8.2 million or whatever it was. And then our actual payment, the actual cost was higher. So our bond payment was, I think it was around $160,000. So that's why when we were really going to look for a rate study, we need to have a rate study done because that bond payment is much greater. But I don't want to just come back and say, hey, we need another 6% just to cover that bond cost. So I can inflate these out and then now like with the water infrastructure coming ahead, we could theoretically start planning. So we know if we have a, say, if we go to do the six bowl, we know it's roughly going to cost us $10,000 for everything in the new cubic plant. We could actually put in a fixed capital cost of say, maybe another couple of dollars every month for a resident. And then that would show us how much cash we could accrue towards that bond payment in the future. And, you know, and maybe knock the bond payment down or know what our customer cost would be.
Well, not only, but I mean, let's be clear, a, a rate study is just that. It's a study. It's a one-time snapshot in time. And they, they may deliver that report on a Tuesday and then come Wednesday for a whole host of reasons. That data could, might not be as good as it once was. I'm not saying it would be totally, well, you can throw your brow all you want, but things change. Well, let's, let's look at the investment this way. So instead of spending $75,000 of the community's money to have a one-time study for us to do the best to make futuristic discussions on, or spend 57,758 for a five-year supported subscription that allows you to input any amount of data, facts, information, planning and, and have that type of support over five years, which is the better investment to your community?
I don't think either one at this point is on.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of puzzled by that, Craig, because the whole purpose of a rate study was something that was really driven by, by you and, and, and the idea of looking at rates in real time and not, it's not getting back to where we were of asking, well, why haven't we looked at rates in three years? Why haven't we looked at rates in six years? This, this supports doing that mission of doing it yearly, but supports it with get every possible opportunity to, to, I don't, I don't know how to say this properly, to, to better serve our community is really what it is. Because if they do an estimate this year, it's simply an estimate. It's a best guess. And, and what does that look like? I mean, this is, this is data that can be forward, brought forward, presented to the entire council and check and walk it through for the public's sake, for every council person's sake and see what it looks like. That supported data versus, and what that, and, and how you trend that out versus, well, this is what I came back with. This is what I think we need at this time.
So just to be clear, it's a little over $10,000 a year. We just have to pay the $50,000 upfront for five full years.
Okay, I understand that. And just to be clear, I'm not sure I was on board of 70,000 for a rate study anyway. I asked for a rate study, but I didn't know how much it was going to cost. Okay, it's fine.
Not only was it expensive, we had one response correct also.
I get it. Well, let's just not say, hey, you wanted the rate. Yeah, I think we all agreed that the rate study on an annual basis was a good idea until we realized what it costs. So let's not single out one person and say, hey.
No, I'm not singling you out.
That's what you were doing.
No, I'm not because I support you in that mission. What I'm telling you is if we truly want to come forward back with the best data to this community, this platform supported by surrounding communities.
I'm just making sure, but I did not know it was going to be 70,000. So you're asking me what I would do now that I know it's 70,000 for one year for a rate study.
And worse.
It's okay. Let me finish. We finish. I let you finish. I think that it's, I think it's fine. I, I agree with what you're saying.
Okay.
I agree, but let's not put that, I did not know it was going to be 70 grand for one year of a rate study.
Okay. And that, was that the exact number for conversation sake?
It was around 60, I think, that we budgeted that that would be.
We budgeted 60, but they came in over budget.
Over budget.
The one that was submitted.
Not only over budget, but we just received the one response as well, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So in the best interest of the community, you tend not, you know, you need to look for other options at that point. And this is another option.
So what does it cost beyond this?
That's it.
No, no, no. It's five years, but then what do they do after five years?
Oh, then.
Did you shut it off?
Yeah, if we're happy with the product, then we come back to the council for another subscription at that time.
And is it the same or does it go up or is this an introductory offer or is this, what is it?
Well, I think they probably base their pricing, well, you guys can comment, I guess, but there's inflationary measures. There's discounts for the subscription that take out the inflate, there's inflation discounts built into the five-year plan, if I'm interpreting that correctly. But when it goes to rebid, I'm assuming they're going to consider, you know, current market conditions like anybody would with. Or do you guys want to comment on how that works for customers that renew five-year subscriptions?
Yeah, I, I can speak on that. You know, we do an annual subscription where if you were to do a one-year subscription, there would be a 5% annual inflationary rate. I don't foresee us going any higher than that. I also would say it's probably pretty fair to assume a 5% annual inflationary rate. So Matt would have quoted an annual subscription as well as multi-year subscriptions with discounted options. And at that time, we would definitely revisit it. Our hope would be that you all fall in love with seeing the information presented this fashion and we'd enter into another subscription. But again, that's a little bit of a ways off.
And I, and I don't know if this would be helpful, but to share and I, and Paula, you know, I don't know if you were even on at that time. But yeah, yeah, there was a time when we had a change in administration or what have you. And I think it was a 20, I mean, it was a big water rate increase that we had to basically enact and, and almost a quasi emergency situation, as I recall. And, and we can point to why we were in it and all that. However, what would have been really helpful is that we're going, well, you know, we're assuming a 5% increase, that that will cover it. And, and, and if we had had a tool like this though, I'm just kind of thinking back to that time to where we got plugged in and said, okay, well, how about if we do 4% this year and 8% next year and what hap? And we, we could have maybe had a, a much clearer understanding of other options that would have made it.
I think I made them go back because I, I'm always doing that. Then I say, okay, what about 4%? You know, and then for Jamie, she's got to go back there and then.
Well, and in this instance.
At least in this case, we could have worked with you as well there, right? And that's something I really want to drive home.
Back and forth in meetings. So we made the best decision we could at the time. However, with this tool, it really would have enabled us, I think, to make a better, the best decision in a bad situation. If, if we had this tool, because at least speaking for myself, looking at it and thinking back to that time, this would have been really helpful for us to maybe come up with a, maybe a better solution than we did at the time, based on the information we had.
And a better decision can also save us quite a bit of money for making the wrong decisions.
Yeah.
Well, that's the key right now with projects. I mean, talking with Chad and Eric is, you know, and just seeing the example with inflation. You know, as projects come in over budget, it can be very unpalatable to still try to do the project, but at these rates, the next year is even worse. So.
This may have been discussed, and if it has, and I missed it, I'm sorry. Moline uses this. How long have they been using it and are they having success with this tool?
I'll let my colleague speak to that. Grant has worked pretty closely with Tony before.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've been working with Tony, I believe, since 2018, 2019. I'm going to pull up actually a quick visual of his model. You can see that, and Tony's granted me access to utilize and then showcases his model. He's been a great help to us, being with us from the start. You can see we model all their utilities. And again, without getting too granular in this, you can see that he's got a pretty robust model. I don't know if you've seen it in the news, but Tony's got significant capital improvements for his wastewater treatment plant. There's going to be a huge amount of borrowing, which is going to be a huge amount of proposed debt service. And again, I can't get into the details in terms of, and I'm sure you can assume this is a significant burden on his rate pairs. And I think that by working with our team and doing a full cost of service analysis study, what Moline determined, and again, we worked with their city council as well, is that their wholesale customers were on antiquated contracts for decades and we're getting a really good break. And so their rates are coming up substantially higher than their residential commercial customers. So again, we want to make sure that rates are not only generating sufficient revenues, but they're also coming from very customer categories and that this is equitable and fair based on the cost to deliver services. But that's a long-winded answer, but yeah, we've, we've done a lot of good work with Tony as well as Moline.
Thank you.
That's it.
Yes, Rick.
You brought up like projects that go over budget and right now that you can't really see that when you, in the budget, you have to really kind of go back and really look pretty hard at that. Once it over budget gets put in this graph, that graph changes for you. And you know, you might see that in the future. But you know, what's happened right now, obviously we get digging ground and finding a lot of things that didn't know were there and everything else, the cost goes up. But once that gets implemented in here, then that your graph is also real-time seeing how it's affecting.
Right.
Well, we just have a project over budget. It's happening. You're going to be able to see it.
If we agree to this, how soon can it, how soon would it be implemented?
Yeah, the plan here would be, if it gets moved forward, it would be approved in September. And then we would start to work with them on November 1st on, starting to work on planning for really 2026 talks.
Will they be coming to Geno SEO at all or is this all through computers?
Hold on real quick. We'll have this, the 25 budget passed by then.
No, we have to give them our data.
Right.
And we'll, we'll be pretty far down the road, almost.
No, it would start in November of 24 and then run five years from that date.
Right. So you would have.
No. No, we, we intentionally discuss that and, and with Waterworth so that we could use them so that it doesn't caught off today. And we, we lose the tool before we're doing budgeting for year 2029 or whatever it is. So really.
We'd be able to utilize that data for that whole year.
For five full years of budgeting is why we would want to start after. We're, we're too close. You know, this isn't like Jamie sends an email and then we have this done tomorrow after we buy it. There's going to be a build-out with them and with staff that's going to take time and it's really not going to be, there's not going to be good presentations to bring back for budgeting discussions, which will start, you know, next month.
Staff is pretty far down the road, at least preliminarily on their budgets.
Right.
That's why I was wondering if they would be coming to Geno SEO or can this all be done through?
I think most of the meetings would, would take place remotely. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No.
Yeah, we, we find it makes most, most practical sense financially, economically. We conduct all of our meetings via Zoom.
And where are you located? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're based in the Pacific Northwest on the wrong side of the border. Don't hold it against us, but we're in, near Vancouver, Canada, Vancouver, B.C. But don't hold it, don't hold it against us. We work with a lot of communities all across the country.
That bid, there's no setup fees or no, things don't increase over that five-year span?
Yeah, that's, that's the whole boat. Is that correct, guys?
That is correct. There's no implementation. There's no onboarding fees that are also included. Also typically I want to touch on if you have, again, if we went up for a rate study and, you know, engage them for a five-year period. And maybe after year two, it comes back, we need to adjust a few things. Typically, you'd probably have to get another invoice to be able to have them come back and perform that analysis. That's why again, not only are we doing this continuously for y'all and working with you all, however, we're not going to be throwing extra invoices at you down the line. This is again, that one-time upfront cost.
All in. And I, I'd say that some folks have said, you know, for unlimited support and advising hours, we're going to milk you and we love that. We love clients that are meeting with our team constantly. I've on-boarded clients that have definitely gotten their money's worth for sure. Um, I've on-boarded clients that have definitely gotten their money's worth, for sure.
Well, I'd make a motion. Make a motion to recommend to city council approval of the Waterworth five-year subscription proposal at fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and to place on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kenneth, second by Rothschild, roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Samowski.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Rudehouse.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Rothschild.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point five would be the auditor discussion with Treasurer Matthew, Matthews.
Would you like to talk?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll just say quickly, thank you very much, everyone. We're, we're very excited to partner up with all of you and, uh, we look forward to speaking soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Another lighthearted discussion here.
Okay, so late last week, I got a, um, phone call from our auditor informing us that, um, the audit service fee structure is going to be changing. Um, so they did, they did send us why it's going to change, it is going to increase significantly. A lot of it is due to, um, the lack of people going into that industry.
It's paragraph three.
Um, it also is, uh, due to a lot of communities, um, you know, with less people, there's more communities that aren't being serviced. Um, so they ultimately have the ability to increase based on supply and demand. Um, so that being said, our previous proposal was for thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
Five hundred.
Yeah.
And our new proposal cost is for fifty-six to fifty.
That's sizable.
And it, correct, it is sizable. Um, I,
okay.
I don't, either way, I'm totally fine if we want to go out for RFP.
I think we should.
Um, and that's totally fine. I, I talked to Brandon earlier, um, about just being very upfront and forward. Our last RFP, there were people that came in at sixty thousand and that was for year twenty twenty-one. Um, I did contact other communities and, um, they are all coming in forty, fifty percent higher in auditing services. So don't be sticker shocked when.
I know.
That, that occurs. And, um, there even is a community, uh, Quincy is that way forward too. They did an RFP, one auditing firm responded.
Yeah, see, the, the problem is they don't want to audit. There's just way too much liability. I, I mean, they have, you know, their insurance, their, their everything. What it's costing them.
Right.
To do that and take on that.
Yeah.
They don't want to do it. You know, may, maybe they're pricing themselves because they don't want to do it. And it's true too.
That's why I think an, an RFP is in order. I think we need to find out.
Yeah, but like she said, it, you know, don't fool yourself.
Or we get one response, I mean, which, that's fine. I, I, I agree. I have no problem following the council. Decision.
To the residents to see. I mean, before we just say, oh, okay, we're going to pay twenty-one thousand dollars more.
No, I'm, I, I honestly don't care who our auditor is.
We owe it to all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To price this.
Dirk, are we having these problems with other cities?
There are a number of, as Paul's pointing out, there are a number of firms that left the sector. The public doesn't pay. I don't have this problem with my own lawyers. I'm, I'm in a case right now for a company where the lawyer across the table, who, uh, is a co-defendant with the community that I represent, is charging twelve hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And then they pay you based on that hourly rate. So there are firms that are getting out of the public sector and it's not just law firms, it's not just auditing firms.
Industry areas.
A whole bunch of taxpayers don't want to pay. All right, well, then we don't want to do the work because the, there's a shortage of.
Accountants.
And auditors and the private sector pays so much more money. They're there. It's filtered down even to things like scum damage and tree removal. You try and contract a tree removal or a tree work, they're going to go to the private sector who will pay four or five times more for a twenty-four hours, eight hours response time than the public. And so that's such a lecture. So doing an RFP is the right thing to do, see what's there. But there are a number of firms in the public sector, and particularly, um, I would say west of thirty-nine. West of thirty-nine, we've seen a number of our competitors leave the market. And, uh, talking to Lauterbach and Amen and, um, a couple of the other big auditing firms that concentrate east of thirty-nine, they're seeing the same thing. They've all bumped their rates because the competition's now a handful as opposed to a robust competition.
Yeah, it's just not.
No, it's so hard for cities that honestly, they implemented, um, for communities under a thousand, that they don't have to go through their annual audits. They have to have different types.
I was wondering, but we have.
And I know, again, I'm, I'm no staff on this one. I don't understand. I mean, it's a TV dinner here. Jamie's so good at what she does.
Well, that's what.
It's a warm it up and serve it. I don't understand the idea that they, it's complex. Yeah, Gatsby's added a bunch of stuff. That's across the board for everybody. I think whoever says this is sort of a, we're really not that interested in doing it, take our shot, otherwise we'll just move on.
But we have to do it every year. Yes.
We won't get grants ever again if we, if we didn't do it.
That's right. I mean.
It can't be worse, right? If you go out for an RFP, it's not going to be worse.
I mean, I got called today to buy a film. You know, they're going out like crazy. You know, would you be interested? Should we send you an email?
So she made a price to have over the next two years.
No.
If you read the footnote, there's no guarantee on the following years either.
Yeah, I saw that. But, but the other side of it is, you know, we're going to have to use our judgment because Jamie will tell you, if these people come in and do it, they've got a system, they've got our numbers, they've got their work papers. If we do go with somebody new, do you know what I'm saying? You know what I mean? There's more work because they.
Yes, but as you know, you're required to go with somebody new every so often for that exact reason. That we don't get too familiar and have blind spots, so.
How many years have we been with these? How, how many years have we?
We got them in twenty nineteen and then before that we were at Kerpen Tier Mitchell Valley sometime.
If we put an RFP out and we don't like it, can we just go back to these people or?
Let's try.
So this is five years almost.
Yeah, we can try.
It'll be our fifth one with them.
RFP.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We'll tell them we consider this their proposal and we're getting.
And I already honestly informed them that.
Yeah.
This was likely to occur. And they were fine. They said they totally understood.
They don't care. No, they don't. They're going to charge what they want. Charges I've been seeing.
So what do we do to make a call or are you making a motion? Make a motion, Paul.
Should I just say make a motion to?
Direct staff to go.
To direct staff to.
Second.
For our accounting or our audit.
Motion by Arnold, or motion by Samowski, second by Arnold, roll call.
All right. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay. Arnold?
Yes.
Samowski?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point six would be the Hanford Street parking discussion.
Okay, this is not a discussion about the increase in pricing. Um, this is a situation that has come up on Hanford Street. Uh, you guys are aware of the new tier-one gymnastics business on Hanford. Um, really, if Jamie, if you want to open up the bottom image, it really tells the story of what this measure is. Um, you know, people really haven't parked on the street on Hanford before because we have a lot of industrial. It's a business district. There's really no reason for anybody to, um, throw a car on the street. Uh, the good news is it looks like, you know, tier-one gymnastics is busy. There's a lot of parents there dropping off kids during class transition times. I know the chief had a conversation with the owners there about this situation. Um, they're going to try to talk to customers about not doing this type of parking scenario. However, talking with Chad, uh, the police department, you know, we all are in agreement that really the, uh, smart thing to do here is to make Hanford in the business district so north of the residential area, which you see down the roadway in this image. Um, the business district, um, all the way down to Main Street to be no parking on the west side of Hanford Street, let the cars park on the east sides closer to the business for the, um, drop-off point, not running across the roadway. And, uh, that's really the proposal. If, if we have a general, I guess consensus is all, what I'm looking for here that, um, and I believe there is a motion, um, that to direct us to not, put together an ordinance for, uh, no parking on the west side of Hanford, which we would bring back for a vote at the September tenth meeting.
So they don't have a parking lot?
They, they do have a parking lot. It's, uh, clearly not holding the customers. I, I don't know if there's any other feedback, Casey, on if you want to share anything else, but.
That picture was the time where they had developed, I think, so I didn't see, I, I did not see that real life myself. I did not see it since then. I, I personally feel it's a good idea for any future development that in that area to have growth. They'll stare for that business and stare for the weather and stuff like that. There's going to be lots of them and more importantly, you know, I guess there's a fire back there. There's no way that fire trucks can do that.
There's no sidewalk, there's no sidewalks, there's no, no sidewalks.
So in the, in the winter time when there's snow, it's going to be even worse.
Yep.
Or.
Parking.
They're not going to park in the, in the building.
Yeah, there's some other options they, they were advised to look at for potential parking with the business that's running that whole online facility. They're not using a container for their operations or all hours, so hopefully they'll, you know, get, get covered with that.
But I understand your thought, Craig, because in hindsight, the conversation with a potential business on what, what they're going to be generating and what that looks like to the neighborhood, parking-wise. It, it's an important one to have. I mean.
Why they're busy.
Well, that's a great thing too, but we also have to make sure as we develop this community that, uh, whatever gets plugged in somewhere, uh, fits within that, that framework of what their, their customer base is going to look like.
Uh, motion direct staff to bring an ordinance restricting parking on Hanford Street forward to the September tenth, twenty twenty-four council, city council meeting for approval consideration.
Second.
Motion by Arnold, second by Rothschild, roll call.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Samowski?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight point seven would be R twenty-four dash twenty, the appointments to the plan and zoning board.
Resolution, two gentlemen, Troy Christopherson and Scott Schulte, recommendations by the mayor to join the plan zoning board for two vacant seats that need to be filled.
How many are on there now? Do we merge it now?
It's a nine-member board now. Yep. There's currently seven and, uh, one gentleman had to step down and another one chose to, um, retire before his term end from.
Motion to recommend R twenty-four twenty to the city council meeting and to place on the consent agenda.
Motion by Arnold.
Second.
Second by Swanson, roll call.
Arnold?
Yes.
Samowski?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number nine would be the payment of city and utility bills. It's not one single bill, there's.
We had to have a shutdown on College Avenue and they, um, they did a service for us from the mains to the, uh, third box and that was with Flagler.
So I remember reading in there about Lodge Park and others when I signed the checks.
That was, oh, we did have like a nine thousand twenty-seven dollar.
Nine thousand forty-five dollars.
That was with Flagler.
So it was more than one.
I was on my toes. That's why I knew about the other one that he didn't know about yet.
You weren't asking about the Lodge Park.
Motion to pay the bills is presented.
Motion by Arnold.
Second.
Second by Swanson, roll call.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Samowski?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Public comment related to all their items. I feel like I need to just start asking if Anne has anything. City ordinance allows members of the public to speak and give input up to three minutes during public comment. There can be no debate or action by the city council at this time. Okay, uh, next would be a move into executive session for five I L C S, one twenty slash two C two. Motion by Arnold.
Second.
Second by James, roll call.
Arnold?
Yes.
Samowski?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Rudehouse?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Rothschild?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.